Good evening, this is a call to order for the December ninth, two thousand twenty-four, City Canal Winchester Planning and Zoning Meeting. Mr. Deeds, roll call please.
Mr. Ritchie.
Here.
Mr. Wildenthaler.
Present.
Okay. Mr. Donahue.
Present.
Ms. Gooden.
Here.
Ms. McDonnell.
Here.
Mr. Deeds.
Here.
And Mr. Pausgrove.
Here.
Now I'll need approval of our November two thousand twenty-four minutes, please.
Mr. Church, so motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Pausgrove. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Ritchie.
Yes.
Mr. Wildenthaler.
Oh, oh. I'm sorry, yes, I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
Now it's time for a public comment for items that are not on our agenda this evening. So if there's anybody here from the public wishing to speak for items that are not on the agenda, now is the time. All right. If you'll be speaking with us this evening, if you're able, could you please stand and take an oath? So if there's any chance you'll talk to the commission, please stand and take an oath. Do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give and tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. And before I turn it over to staff, I should let the commission and the members here this evening know that I am a trustee for the organization that is on our agenda tonight for both applications. So I will run the meeting, but I will recuse myself from any conversation or votes on these two agenda items. So I'll now turn it over to staff.
The first application item is conditional use twenty-four dash zero zero four. This request this evening is to open a cultural heritage center and private event venue at ten West Oak Street. The subject property is owned Old Town Commercial. It lies within the Old Town Historic District, which is managed by the Landmarks Commission. Adjacent properties are a wide mix of old town, single-family, limited manufacturing, old town commercial, and multifamily apartments. The majority of the surrounding property is also regulated by the Landmarks Commission and the Old Town Overlay District. The applicant this evening is requesting conditional use to section eleven sixty-one point oh four of the Old Town Commercial zoning district. Eleven sixty-one point oh four, section ten specifically allows for other compatible uses that are not expressly prohibited by eleven sixty-one point oh four C. A private event center, any other type of synonym is not defined in our zoning code. So this is the section we've applied in the past for facilities that want to open within this Old Town Commercial zoning district. The subject property is owned and maintained by the Canal Winchester Historical Society. It contains three historic structures. The main structure is the OP Cheney Grain Elevator, constructed on eighteen eighty. The Hawking Valley Railroad Depot, which completed its construction in eighteen ninety-four, and the Prentice School that was constructed in eighteen fifty and moved to this site in nineteen eighty. Again, the applicant is requesting to open a private event venue called Elevate eighteen twenty-eight and the OP Cheney Grain Elevator. This entity, Elevate eighteen twenty-eight, will also have the ability to utilize all the existing structures on this subject property. But the main structure, the OP Cheney Grain Elevator, is approximately four thousand square feet on the ground floor, and the entire building is currently undergoing a major renovation with structural stabilization and historic rehabilitation. The interior of the space is being modernized to include fire suppression, insulation, HVAC, along with modern lighting and amenities. The Historical Society has further received approval from the Landmarks Commission to construct a new front vestibule and preliminary plans for a new nine hundred square foot patio to the rear. The site plan provided in the next application, SDP twenty-four dash zero zero three, shows the applicant plans on constructing a new sixteen stall parking lot to the side of the building, putting the total parking on site with the existing head-in parking off Oak Street at twenty-one stalls. This is the existing head-in parking here and approximate location for the new lot to the rear. The interior floor plan provided by the applicant showcases how the facility will be transformed into a private event venue. Skip ahead a couple of slides here. Shows how we transform to a private event venue with the creation of approximately eighty-five seat event hall, eighty-eight seat gathering hall, a catering hall, restroom facilities, outdoor patio, and dining space. Again, the Prentice School and Railroad Depot are also noting the application to be available for secondary rental space if necessary. Looking at the application here provided by the applicant, they've noted again that they would like to operate the entity called Elevate eighteen twenty-eight to create a premier venue for various events, including weddings, corporate gatherings, social events, and community functions. This venue will be flexible, will have typical amenities and packages that are comprised of these types of spaces, and that they are looking to provide a mix of utilizing this historic landmark and making it a unique atmosphere for guests. The applicant has provided some inspirational photographs here of other types of venues that they're looking to replicate within this space. Again, the floor plan that shows the breakdown of the facility here. The applicant has provided some information for the Landmarks Commission, excuse me, the Planning and Zoning Commission, on the business structure and management, how they're going to be hiring an event coordinator, operations manager, having marketing and sales tactic, and then staffing for the facility. Along with the staffing plan, they've also provided a financial plan showing how they're going to strategize the startup costs and revenue streams. And then looking again at the event packages on how they're going to showcase the property for people that are looking to rent it for private events. Again, they're showing here on the low end, it'll be about five thousand dollars to rent the facility. On the higher end, ten thousand and up. Again, more information provided on the marketing strategy, on how they're going to build this facility and intertwine it with the existing community. And then talking here about their phase one with website launch, social media pages, finalizing their operational decisions, and then hiring the staff to operate the facility once it gets approval. With the application here, the applicant is showing their operational plan here, which will be seven days a week, start opening at nine AM, closing by ten PM. They do note in here that any music that will be portrayed with any events that will be amplified will be off by ten PM. And again, just their type of events that they're going to be catering towards, weddings, corporate events, and community events. With their growth plan, they're talking about how, once this facility gets started, how they can expand their services to get more businesses part of that. One of the things staff noted in here is that in year two, they're considering offering overnight accommodations for wedding parties. The overnight accommodations by our zoning definition would be classified as a motel or a hotel. That is strictly a prohibited use in the Old Town Commercial zoning district. So that is something that is just cannot be permitted through the Planning and Zoning Commission or Landmarks Commission. So it's something just to make the Planning and Zoning Commission aware of this evening that that portion of the slide is just not feasible at the current zoning of the property. So staff is recommending that conditional use twenty-four dash zero zero four be approved or presented. The applicant has met the five criteria for the conditional use section, noting that the proposed use is a conditional use of the zoning district. Again, this is considered and the other compatible use is not expressly prohibited. It's similar to other event spaces that Planning and Zoning Commission has approved in the past. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent land use, zoning, and appropriate plans for the area. The proposed use as an event space is compatible. The Old Town Commercial District is meant to accommodate a mix of uses, and there are other examples of event spaces that have been intertwined with other businesses, and the High LLC, which is a specific event, private event space only, that's currently operating on South High Street. The applicant, again, is proposing to add parking on site to help foster more private events and provide private parking for that facility. The subject property does sit within an overlay district within Canal Winchester that does not require any parking. So the parking that's being added is to help cater for this venture for the new proposal. The proposed use will result in the re-energization and the physical structural improvement to the historical site. This property has already received over three million dollars in state grants for renovations to jumpstart this rehabilitation of the site. The conditional use would further pump income into the property for ongoing maintenance and improvement, and that no adverse impacts are anticipated associated with the proposed use as an event space. Again, the applicant's noting operating hours, seven days a week, with rentals ending at eleven PM. If there's any questions from the commission, I'll be glad to help answer. Applicant's here to answer any questions that you guys have on their proposal as well.
Questions for staff? See, I'll start with an easy one. So the Historical Society is separate from the city, maybe just for the education of everyone?
Yes. So the Historical Society is not an official branch of the city proper from a government perspective.
Okay.
They are a nonprofit that operates this facility, as well as the Barbershop Museum, the Canal Winchester History Museum, and other various entities throughout the community.
Okay. Will the city be making any improvements to the street? Because at the moment, there's no curbs. It's pretty much a...
No questions. Nope, no questions.
There are no current plans for any city-related improvements related to this project.
So other than the twenty-one eventual places, then folks will just park wherever they can find parking, correct?
So the additional lot that will be covered in the next application will be installed prior to occupancy of this facility.
Okay. Are there plans to improve Oak Street in the future?
None at this time.
Any other questions or comments for staff?
I have a follow-up question, and it revolves around parking. So I understand that our code in this area does not require a minimum parking, but if this was in any other area, if you have a hundred and ninety-seat facility, what would you be requiring for parking?
So because our zoning code does not define a private event venue, there is no match in our parking chapter for how many speeds per, say, thousand square feet of facility. When looking at this plan with the applicants early on, the push from city staff was to develop the lot that's shown on the drawings. The original concept had a wing addition going in this location of the site. I'll skip ahead to another slide here. So the prior plans had a building addition that would take up this side of the facility. Staff had noted that parking was a concern from our end on how to facilitate these types of private events. So the applicants had reworked the site plan to create the lot that's shown on the screen. From another, I guess, best scenario, the most stringent parking standard that our code defines besides a sit-down fast-food restaurant would be one space for every two hundred square feet. So this facility is much less than that, but there are, again, no minimum thresholds for parking to be met. So this was an attempt by the applicant to help facilitate the needs of the business on the site itself.
Okay, thank you. I'm still concerned that if you have a venue and there's eighty-five people there, and you only have thirty parking spots, that you are significantly impacting the streets around there. And do we know what the capacity of those streets are, and then where do people park when that fills up?
So I think the applicant can help answer some of those questions on what they anticipate from a capacity standpoint from overflow that will not fit on this facility. I believe currently they have a oral agreement with a couple adjacent property owners that have space to park on that's off-street. Oak Street itself is on-street parking only on the south side. The north side does not facilitate any on-street parking. That was something that staff had also asked the applicant to explore was if there was the ability to reconfigure Oak Street and do some improvements to get on-street parking on the north side. With the existing location of utilities and grade changes, the lot that they are proposing back here was the most effective from a constructibility standpoint. But I think they'll be able to answer any more questions you have on anticipated guests for the facility, how they're going to manage the parking.
Okay.
Things of that nature.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll just leave it on this slide. I know this is in the next application, but it seems to be a good one for a visual perspective.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Does the applicant wish to add anything? Please, sir, sign in, state your name, and you may present anything that you wish, you feel necessary that staff didn't cover, and we'll take questions for you as well.
Good evening, thank you. John Oney with Archall, forty-nine East Third Street, Columbus, Ohio. I'll answer all the questions we have here, but if you have a moment, I would like to just give a brief history and all that. This has been, I feel like I'm a pretty lucky guy. I've been in this business forty years, and people we've worked with here, Canal and the team here, have been pretty exciting to work with. So it's been a good opportunity for me. Thank you for hearing us tonight. Thanks to Andrew, he always does an excellent job of doing an in-depth report, which is very accurate to the things we've discussed in the past. So I would like to introduce who I've got with me, Bruno Brundridge, Todd Weiser, and Bob Wood. They've been instrumental in getting us to this far. Bruno's the director of the new venture we have here at Elevate eighteen twenty-eight. Elevate, it's an unpaid job to this point, so she's done incredible work with the Historical Society in getting us to this point. Bob Wood and Bob, their contributions, and they've also offered to be a construction assistant manager in this process at no cost, which has really been amazing. The city given us a lot of support and assistance this day, and the state of Ohio, we've got grants that nobody believed were possible. So without this team, it really wouldn't have been impossible to get to this point. I've been lucky to work with them, and I'd just like to say to them, a lot of people talk the talk. These people walk the walk. I mean, it's amazing what we've accomplished. When you look at the Old Town Plan for this, it was maybe, maybe if everything works right, could be four years. We're looking at two years. We're going to make this happen. So it's been great for me to work with them in starting to do the marketing plan. We really wanted to incorporate the city, its goals, and the Historical Society. So consequently, Elevate eighteen twenty-eight, eighteen twenty-eight's when the city was founded, and Elevate, the elevator was born eighteen seventy, but we really want to, for the community, for the focus plan that we've set, it benefits the community, increase this venue, we wanted to represent both parties, so we've done that. So just very briefly, I don't want you to look at this tonight, but in your packet, there's these cartoon sketches of what an eighteen seventy grain elevator was. It's really amazing, and if you get some time, look at this. I mean, what was done eighteen seventy, a long time ago, how you bring the grains in, you drop them in, they took these buckets up to the top floor, they put them in bins, all these shoots are amazing, all the components when you look at these things. What we've been able to do here is create touch, feel, experience, this whole operation of the facility. We're doing guided tours up through the five levels. You see the bins, you see where the grains deposited, you see the trolley systems, the pulleys, all that stuff. It's amazing to see, and for the Cultural Heritage Center, we'll be able to get the touch and feel for people who do those tours. So it's an amazing thing that we'll draw. For the main level, the assembly area, which we're creating, we will have an event center, which will create opportunities for community events or weddings or other events that we can rent out. Normally, there probably could be a hundred people, maybe, let's say, in the main exhibit hall, and then you move over to the gathering hall, those same people, if you had a wedding, for instance. If you had a major exhibit hall for the community and all that stuff, you could have more people in both buildings at the same time. We've attempted to do as best we can with the parking solution. We originally had an addition to the building for a comfort center, which would be the restrooms and comfort center, emergency staff operations, that sort of thing. We removed that and created sixteen additional parking spaces. We moved the comfort station, the two restrooms, which are now ADA accessible, to the main building in the Hoffman Meeting Room. What will happen is that we'll use those for our events, but also for farmers' markets, other things that occur on this site. That section of the building will be accessible. We can lock off the main Cheney Hall, but have that accessible, so we now have ADA restrooms for all the events that are occurring on this site. We've also incorporated the Prentice School, the train station, and even the caboose into really creating a campus environment where we can market and create this whole campus site with the train station and the Prentice School and the Cheney and the Historic Register to preserve that and really create a, as the Old Town Plan said, this is what we want the venue to be, and that's what we've created. So we're excited about what we've done in two years. It's amazing with the team we have, we've actually are going for an occupancy permit in two thousand twenty-five. Not four years, but two years. So the space itself, very quickly, and then I'll move on, but the event center, we have exhibit halls, gathering halls, a prep kitchen, and outdoor patio, ADA restrooms. We designed it so that we do have the accessible areas when the Cheney is closed. Stabilization, that was started last year. We're done. We've, all the foundation and the structural issues are done. The roof has been done. It's now waterproof, and phase two is now under construction. We're doing the siding right now. We're in for permits for the vestibule addition. We've addressed the parking problems, which will be coming in for approval, and we're doing the interior build-out. Some of the things we're doing, incorporating some of the original siding that we're relocating or redoing on the outside to the interior to create, again, that same feeling of the elevator was built. So just from a code standpoint, we are fire suppressing the building, so it allows us to have an assembly place of as many people as we want. We feel a hundred's probably the limit we can actually deal with parking and lay parking and off-site and those things. The accent lighting we're doing on the inside is pretty incredible. We're going to be accenting how this building functions, the scale, the dump, the boot, the head, the turn head, the bins. Even we have glass viewing stations down into the conveyor systems that were underneath the basement level. So it's going to be a very, very exciting educational experience. We've got up lighting to accept the elevator at night. We've done landscaping to kind of increase and enhance the north end of the site. We're trying to activate that area. We've got low-level security lighting in the parking. There's house shields, there's no foot candle cutoff to any adjacent properties, but we need security lighting for that parking. We've increased the campus connectivity with some sidewalks and paths to all these buildings to really have a true campus that we can offer to Canal and surrounding people. We've also added a large patio to the backside of the building. It's a beautiful space. It's not activated now, but we really feel that would enhance the experience. So we've, I've been excited to be part of this, but really the team here that has been involved is really, it's their vision, along with Canal's, that really has brought us to this point. So just briefly, on Oak Street and parking, we did have different solutions we presented to Andrew and the staff, increasing parking along Oak Street as well, and then going back into the parking. I think we listened to Andrew and staff, and they preferred us producing the parking as we show it now, where we'd add sixteen or existing twenty-one or five spaces on Oak Street, which we'd preserve, will create an ADA access path to the main entrance from that point. And then in overflow parking, we do have a program to make sure our guests have a very good experience. I mean, if they don't, they won't come back. So we realize parking and the overflow of anyone in twenty-one has to be addressed with our plan for that. So anyway, thanks for letting me speak so long, and our team's here to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments for the applicant? And so we're kind of talking about both applications here interchangeably, so feel free to ask if something's on the site development plan that comes to mind.
I have a question. The entrance is through the proposed vestibule?
Correct.
And it appears that your ADA parking is connected via sidewalk, but I don't see a connection from the new parking lot.
No, the ADA parking, the ADA spaces are on Oak Street. They're currently listed and shown, and our connection will be by a sidewalk that's not yet finalized. We're doing that in the plans we're submitting, and we will have an ADA ramp that tests to be a U-shape and connects from the existing ADA parking to the main vestibule.
Okay, but the new proposed parking lot, where does it, how does it connect then to the entrance?
It'll connect with the sidewalk. It doesn't need to be an ADA access, because that's where our handicap parking these spaces are.
I'm with you, it just doesn't show any connection on this diagram.
No, we're still working through the grading plans. We have an existing beautiful big tree that we're working around, are retaining walls, and we weren't able to do ADA access on that side, so we left the existing on Oak Street, and we're working on retaining that tree and then doing a sidewalk around that will connect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So the initial proposal talks about four thousand square feet on the first floor, and I heard reference of the other floors. Was it intent to develop the other floors at a later point in time, or are they just for...
No, no. It's quite an experience. It will simply be educational, it'll be guided tours. We have, we've met with Mike Marica, chief building official, as far as egress and safety from those spaces. and safety from those spaces. We have stair systems, exit signs, all that stuff done, where we're gonna give guided tours, led tours, to all the four levels involved. It's, it's, it's really going to be, it's, it's an incredible space. So, that'll be limited. We'll, we'll coordinate off for any events for the first floor, where you not have access to that space.
Okay. I believe there was mention earlier about verbal agreements. So, is it with the, I don't know, it used to be a photographer's studio next to it, for the additional parking? Is that, you just have other verbal agreements or off-site?
I, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but we've, we've tried, but I'm not sure that the adjacent side is even available.
That's right. I was just curious, I think it was just mentioned earlier, so.
We've tried.
So, I have a, a non-parking-related question. Elevate 1828, is that going to be a for-profit or not-for-profit spin-off of the Historical Society?
I, I can't answer that. You, you got it. Someone please.
Can I get you the mic, please?
Yeah, technically.
I'm Bruna Brundage, right now, the president of the Historical Society. We are in the process of making Elevate 1828 a LLC with the State of Ohio. I mean, we are going to have to make it for-profit, to the point that it's going to have to sustain itself, and maintain the grounds, and all of, everything we do there pay the staff. Internally, with the trustees, we've talked about any monies we make over that, turning that into the nonprofit work we do, whether it be through scholarships or other things in the city. It's not meant to make money and then be divided up with shareholders or something. It's meant to stay within the Historical Society, and then be appropriated philanthropically after that, after we take what we need to keep it moving, keep it going. It has the potential to make a good amount of money, with that rent off, if it's run the correct way. It should be rented, I would think, maybe 60% of the available time. I mean, I'm just coming up with numbers, but we should have more than enough money to maintain it, but then to have money within the Historical Society to do what we do.
So, thank you for that. The reason for the question really is revolving around the serving of alcohol on this, on the premise for events. The state liquor authority has very strict laws and rules on who can hold a liquor permit, and how that is handled in a facility like this. I was wondering if that's something that you all have addressed?
We have addressed. I think, if I'm not mistaken, these are private parties. We are not ever selling alcohol. There won't be the sale of alcohol. For example, the Historical Society, when we have a gala or an event there where we are selling alcohol, we have to get a temporary liquor license.
Right.
Anyone doing that will have to follow those rules. If you're having a wedding there, and it's a private party, by contract, when you sign your contract, you'll have to agree to have a licensed bartender on-site.
Okay, so you're going to put that onus on the person renting the facility?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
But if we were to hold something, or, you know, where the Historical Society, which we've done in the past for big events, we get a temporary alcohol license
Right.
Through the state.
Okay, just curious.
So, it'd be, it'd be done the same way.
Great, thank you very much.
Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? All right, since this is a conditional use application, there is a public hearing, so I will open it up for public comment. If there's anybody here from the public, you have four minutes to speak. I will kindly interrupt you after three and a half, so now will be the time. So, ma'am, if you could sign in, please, and state your name and your address, and we won't start the clock until you begin speaking.
Thank you. I am not necessarily a good public speaker, but I feel like I'm the only person from the public here, and I have an obligation to stand up and say something, because I'm a-
So, excuse me, ma'am, could you please state your name for the record?
Well, I'm-
Thank you.
It's Mary Nordstrom, and I live at 15 West Oak Street, so I'm directly across from the train station. So, I've got the three minutes here. I did have, I had some concerns coming in. So, it's been, first of all, I want to say congratulations to the Historical Society. I think we've all seen these signs and stuff, but until I delve into this, it's a much bigger project, very ambitious project. But, so I congratulate, and I'm certainly not here to be negative about something that's going to be good for the community. I do take a little bit of deference from the statement that there's not going to be any impact on, let's say, the neighborhood since I, the neighborhood. And I think my, I'm glad we're talking about parking. What I learned, Andrew, I think, is that there is no parking, it's not allowed on the North Steinepoke Street.
That's correct. It's currently signed.
Because that was going to be one of my suggestions, is could we, could we limit parking to one side of the street? The thing is, why do I not know that there's no parking there? So, I would suggest we need to have some signage that says there's no parking on that side of the street, because people do park there. I do think, so that's, I think there's, there is an issue with parking, so I would like to know how the city is going to help us offset the fact that we could end up with a lot of traffic on this street, and even, this is way distant past, but even people's filling over in parking along the alley in the back there. So, I'm just asking that before we, that we, that we set up some guidelines that help, help the neighborhood, especially the street that's right in front of the, the event center. I, also, I may be, I was wrong about the parking, I may be wrong about this, but it has occurred to me that we have, there are trains that come through there, and that this is adjacent. I, I may be wrong about that, but I wonder if there's been any thought of provision to ensuring that we don't have an unfortunate mishap, because a train comes through unexpectedly. So, I just put that out, and a question for the Historical Society, I guess, is when these events take place, which is 60%, you're predicting, is the whole complex shut off? Is there public access at all during the times that we have these events?
Okay, so, so Mrs. Nordstrom, this isn't a back-and-forth question-and-answer session, but we can address some of this in the next application. And time is up, so I will let you finish your, finish your thought.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I do appreciate that I spoke for the public, and once again, I am very in awe of all the work that Historical Society's done.
Thank you.
When you say in the next application, can somebody tell me what that means?
Yeah, so we have a site development plan next, that's, so we're talking about these interchangeably, but we'll try to address some of your questions throughout the remainder of our conversation.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for speaking. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I move we close public hearings.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Waldenthaler. Joe?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes, and Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
So, now we'll need a motion on the conditional use 24-004, so keep in mind, we've talked about these applications together, but the first vote would be for the conditional, the approval of the conditional use.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we approve CU-24-004.
Second.
Was that Mr. Deeds? Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Deeds. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Abstain.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes, Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Okay, so conditional use 24-004 has been approved.
The next application, the site development plan 24-003. The address and location is the same, at 10 West Oak Street. This application is to review the plans for the enhancements that are taking place on the property, which again include the new parking lots, and then other miscellaneous exterior site elements. The applicant is requesting approval for the site work that will be taking place in regards to conditional UC 24-004. Again, the applicant is requesting install a new 16-stall parking lot, 995 approximate square-foot patio, in addition to other miscellaneous site improvements, such as HVAC screening, dumpster enclosure, and a 192-square-foot front vestibule on the front of the building. The majority of those listed improvements have already received a certificate of appropriateness approval from the Landmarks Commission. The only outstanding are final material details for the patio, that do go before the board for further review. Beyond the site improvements, the applicant has received Landmarks Commission approval for renovating the building exterior, including the new roof that has been installed, a new siding, and new windows and doors, and other miscellaneous penetrations throughout. The subject property currently has five-headed parking spaces off of West Oak Street. The applicant is proposing to install a new 16-stall parking lot to the west of the existing building, and as we were talking here this evening, I see there's also three additional on the front end of the site that are being proposed as well. So, apologies, my, the total's incorrect. It's not 21 spaces, but a total of 24 spaces that they're providing on-site for the renovation. The applicant has provided a utility plan here, with the activation of the space, they need to bring in utilities at the facility. The green line on this map shows the sanitary sewer connection that will connect to the sanitary ladder on the south side of West Oak. A new fire line will be extended to the north side of West Oak, New Public Main, and then will branch off to their domestic water and fire service for the suppression. And then this red line here shows the remote fire department connection, the FTC, that they're going to be putting at the front of the facility. These utility kind of diagrams are preliminary at this time, still need to be reviewed by the technical review group during site plan engineering, but just to give the commission idea here, that they are adding some underground improvements to the site as well. With the plans, again, the biggest exterior component is this parking lot to the rear. As the applicant noted in the previous application, some miscellaneous things are still missing from this plan, like connections to the main entry. This is that main vestibule entry they're constructing on the Oak Street side of the building. The applicant did note that they are installing parking lot light. Parking lot lighting is required whenever you have a parking lot that will be used during non-daylight hours. They've provided here a cut sheet for the LED fixture they're using. Looking back, this fixture is very similar, if not the same, to what was installed on the old Chase Bank parking lot. For those that have noticed, that lot is now illuminated at night, to give you an idea of what they've installed elsewhere throughout the city. The photometric plan shows no spillover. The only thing to mention is that their Landmarks application showed the perimeter of their patio would have these decorative lights on piers. The photometric plan does not reflect that, but given the distance and the location adjacent to an industrial building, staff is not concerned with that missing from, from this plan sheet. The applicant has provided a landscape plan, showing that they are exceeding the number of trees that they need to plant for the number of parking and building additions that they are putting on-site. And they've also noted that this area, it's boxed in red, will be added to help shield the parking from the residences to the south. So, there is a little landscape that they are installing. The applicant did note that the layout for the work behind this area mainly revolves around trying to retain this existing tree. The Landworks Commission, again, has reviewed a lot of these details, but for planning and zoning's review as well, they are proposing dumpster screening, and then ground-mounted mechanical screening. The screening is designed to mimic the board and batten texture on the building, so it should blend in with the existing site elements. Just a color site plan provided by the applicant here. This site plan is not showing those three additional spaces in this corner, but again, it is shown on the rest of the plan sheets, detailed noting it would, would be proposed. This existing gravel drive is noted on previous plans to maintain as-is. It's a little hard to see in color, the two different tones of gray there, but did just want to note that this would remain, and while this would be a new asphalt-paved lot. The applicant put together these next set of drawings for the Landworks Commission review. Again, I thought this would be helpful to add to their application this evening, to help planning and zoning commission see the full vision for the renovation of the property. So, this is the Oak Street side of the facility here. This area that's outlined in gray is the new addition they're putting on. They're also looking at, as the applicant noted, redoing all of the siding, and it's all going to be stained, putting in new windows where old vents used to be located, looking at the railroad track side of the facility. This is the patio concept that they're showing that will face the, to the north, and then just some perspective drawings here showing kind of all four sides of the facility, and how it'll look when it's totally renovated. So, staff and the Landmarks Commission have worked with the applicant on multiple iterations of this project, and subsequent certificate of appropriateness approvals. Both staff and Landmarks Commission are recommending that Site Development Plan 24-003 be approved as presented.
Questions or comments for staff?
I have a quick question. Is this on the state historic preservation?
Yes, this is a nationally-registered property.
Okay.
When the conversation started three, four years ago about activating the space, a lot of the conversation revolved around what changes can be made at the facility without removing or reducing the eligibility of it being a national landmark. The applicants have been working directly with the state end to ensure the changes they're making do not do that. From a local level, the Landmarks Commission have been utilizing their Old Town guidelines, which are set up to the state Secretary of Interior standards
Okay.
To ensure that these alterations are of the highest and best intent to maintain the historical nature of the property. Just because you asked, and I can continue talking, that's why one of the elements here, like the front vestibule, is visibly denoted to be a different color, and have a little bit different materials, patterns of the rest of the building to show it's a physical addition. Same, you know, kind of concept as when this addition was put on, you know, 100 years ago, to denote it was separate from the- you know, 100 years ago to denote it was separate from the original construction. Some of the elements the Landmarks Commission is currently working with the applicant on is these were currently just vents for the grain elevator to help produce dust and bring in some light. And the applicant's looking to put windows behind them to help bring in natural light into the facility on the south side. So they are, the applicant is working with Landmarks on how to construct those wooden awnings to be appropriate. Those are some of the additional details that need to go back for their review. But they have, the applicants have been working for the last several years, the Landmarks Commission, on choosing an appropriate metal for the roof, something that had an agricultural kind of look to it, something that was not painted. One of the things that the applicant, again, has worked with is the building traditionally probably wasn't painted. Being an agricultural building, it was not meant to have this long historical life that it has. So staining it will help kind of preserve the material to last longer and tie into more of an agricultural history rather than the paint that's on it now. So those are some of the choices from the physical appearance that has been made to help ensure that it stays on the historic national register.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add for this particular application that hasn't already been covered?
I'd like to make one comment before you continue, just to address the public's concern. I agree with everything that was brought up, and I personally commit that I'll work with the city to get some signage, Andrew, on that north side of Oak. I think that's a, that's a great call out. Chelsea brought up to me, because she works with a lot of event venues, we can actually put into the contract that we are adamant about parking and that they need to also police that. Of course, they're parked in inappropriate places, that there'll be consequence for that. So when you run a venue out, you can be as tough as you want to be about those kind of things. And finally, I commit that I'll work with whomever we have to work with about the fencing and the trains going by. Because I agree with that. I don't know how we'll do that. That sounds like that's going to be a whole landmarks. That's not gonna be an easy thing to talk about. It will also be enormously expensive, but I think it's a good call out. Particularly, the more we use it, the more children that are on-site. It makes me anxious anyway. I mean, even without running it out to more people. And for the public, we'll always, the grounds are always open to the public. And that'll also be just a footnote in the contracts that you might see public wandering around, but it's, that's what it's for. It's for the community. Now, I would not expect them to be allowed to be roaming in the buildings that someone has paid $3,000, $4,000, $10,000 for, but for the grounds, it's a park setting, so, absolutely. So I just want to get on record that I'm committed to look at all those things, and I agree with all those concerns.
Thank you.
I guess maybe one last question for staff. The, this is extremely hypothetical, but let's say something were to change in the future that allowed additional lots to be used for parking. Is the parking lot being constructed to a point that it's gonna, you know, it'd be difficult to dismantle if they found better parking options?
In terms of?
Is it just, I mean, is it just basically an asphalt overlay that they could dig up if they wanted to? Or is it have curbing?
This is a, this is a full parking lot with drainage.
Curbing, drainage, everything?
Yep. Yeah, the application shows on this slide that they plan on installing a structure to collect drainage and to outlet it into a new curb and gutter inlet that will connect to the city system. And this is, this is planned to be a permanent improvement. I know there have been some concepts on how to expand this lot in the future. Obviously, that would probably need to be revisited with this current layout, but I think there are some opportunities to reconfigure this in the future if there needs to be. It would just take acquiring additional property to do so.
Great, understand.
Any other questions? All right, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve SDP 24-003.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, second by Ms. Gooden. Is there any other further discussion?
No, actually, it was a great presentation and great conversation on both sides, so thank you.
Agreed.
Mr. Deeds, rule call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Woldenthaler? Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Abstain.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes, Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
So SDP 24-003 has been approved.
In terms of old and new business, I did pass out, in your eyes, packets, the 2025 calendars. That way you guys can get those put into your personal life calendars for the next year's meetings. With other old and new business, I did update to the chairman that Home Depot has removed all of the extra material stored behind their facility. Worked with their legal counsel and their, I'm not sure her title. She was the property manager for facilities maintenance. She basically helped organize how interior and exterior store flowed. She was unaware of anything that was going on during our conversation. She actually pointed out some additional things that should not have been stored and utilized in the way they were now. We talked about options on expanding a more permanent storage facility on the site. Home Depot elected to correct their current violations and are no longer pursuing a new conditional use. So they are not asking to expand anything. They're gonna be working with their management staff at that facility to operate more efficiently and to put things back on track. I am meeting with a site manager next week to kind of just go over the grounds and take a look at the progress they've done. Unrelated, I saw they planted like 100 bushes along 33. Not sure why, but I'm sure it's something, you know, that we'll talk about when they, when we do the site visit next week. In terms of any other old and business, I don't have anything top of mind. I know last month Lucas mentioned that we entered into a contract with OHM and zoning code to do the zoning code rewrite. And we're having a kickoff meeting, a Zoom meeting, next week with the consultants. More to come on that in terms of timeline and schedule, but we'll keep you posted as, as things progress on that, that end.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Move we close.
Second.
Question by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Deeds. Rule call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Woldenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes, and Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Timeout, 7:58 PM.